September 30th meeting of the Milton School Committee. This meeting was called to order at 6 o'clock for the purpose of adjourning to executive session, which we just had, and I apologize for being a little late coming back to regular session. We deferred the pledge of allegiance until now so we could do it here, so please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands on mission under all the visible liberty and justice.
Thank you. Moving to the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, we will approve tonight's agenda as written. Second, we have citizen speak. Mara, do we have anyone for citizen speak? No one for citizen speak? So we will move to item five on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report. Ms. Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. Very briefly, full-day kindergarten legislation. I had kept the school committee informed that through our Ada Rose Marin, who is our advocate and consultant, who is known across the state and has helped us with our full-day kindergarten program and is now helping us with our preschool programs. She made us aware that there's legislation at the state level advocating for preschool and full-day kindergarten. And so I'll keep you abreast of where that legislation is going. It's the first of its type, and we're one of the communities that have the full-day kindergarten grant, so we have a vested interest in the funding sources at the state. So I'll keep you informed of that. But again, it was in the local newspapers and all over the news. Secondly, I've asked you tonight, I asked Chairman Zulus, to sign the Charms Collaborative Agreement. Glenn, may I ask you to put that slide up briefly for me? While Glenn, Dr. Pavlicek's putting up the slide, the Milton Public Schools and public schools across the state, students with individual educational plans, sometimes their needs require that they go to private special ed placements. And across the state, there are private schools that will provide instruction for these students. And in between these private placements and the public schools, there are collaboratives across the state. And these collaboratives are usually geographically based. And so we've belonged for many years to the Charms Collaborative. And not to read to you, but this collaborative is made up of Avon Canton, Holbrook, Milton, Sharon Stoughton. Randolph did belong, and they withdrew from the collaborative. And the collaborative is funded under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, read section 4E, from the Massachusetts, I had the reference right here, from, I'll find that for you, from the law. And so every year, they're really regulated by the Department of Education very strictly. You might remember the press over the years about these collaboratives, their budgets, they're audited. We have board meetings once a month. And currently, this Charms Collaborative, we have only one child in the Charms Collaborative, one Milton Public School children, child, whose needs, again, a parent would go and visit the collaborative, might visit private placements, see the offerings inside the Milton Public Schools, and this is a team decision, these private placements. And so what I'm asking tonight, I put in your packet, is yearly, we are asked to sign the collaborative agreement, and we're a member of this collaborative. I would also tell you, and I've alerted, the Charms Collaborative, that we have quite a few dealings with the SocShore Collaborative and another group of communities. We have more students placed, and what happens when you belong to the Charms Collaborative, your students go at a reduced tuition. So we're going to be with our new director of pupil personnel, looking this year whether we're going to remain in the Charms Collaborative or look where it appears that our children, our students are being placed in what collaborative. Because when you belong and you're invested and you're a member, it's a reduced tuition for the students who go to that collaborative. So I'm asking tonight for your approval, a vote for Chairman Zulus to sign the agreement for this year. You may have looked at it. I will notify you, working with Tracy Grandow, we'll make a presentation to you before December. We would have to notify the Charms Collaborative if we were going to withdraw.
Kristen.
Two questions. Charms, we have one student in there now?
Yes.
And how many do we have in SocShore, did you say?
Well, I don't want to tell you the number right off.
Okay.
But in the event, I know that we have more students in the SocShore Collaborative, and we also access the SocShore Collaborative for some detailed testing that we don't have individuals on staff to do. You understand that.
Okay. Yep. And then this is, the contract is for a year, and what is the fee for us to belong to Charms? No, we don't know?
We don't have a fee.
No.
There's not a fee.
I thought we had a fee.
No, it's the reduced tuition.
Oops. It's the, oh, we don't pay a fee to belong? Huh. Okay.
But it's a commitment that you're part of a collaborative, and so, no fee.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to, the motion would be to authorize the chair to sign the Charms Collaborative Agreement for this, for this year?
Move to authorize the chair to review and sign the Charms Collaborative Agreement, provided he determines that the agreement is in order.
Second. Thank you.
Move to authorize the chair to review and sign the Charms Agreement, provided he determines that the agreement is in order.
Motion's been made, and second, and I will just, I would just point out that we do have a policy on the Charms Collaborative, if anyone wants to review it, and it's really a policy just laying out the benefits of the Charms Collaborative, and that's policy LBA. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, no opposed, unanimous.
And I just want to say, that's the Code of Massachusetts Regulations 603. Very briefly, I sent you an email, a very exciting day here at Milton High School this week. Our new football coach, who is also Milton Public School parent, Steve Dombrowski, was named the Coach of the Week by the New England Patriots. Andrew, Andre Tippett?
Andre Tippett.
Andre Tippett presented Coach Dombrowski with a check for $1,000. The visit and the check are going to be featured on Friday night, Patriots All-Access, which is on Friday, October 2nd, at 7:00 on WBZ. And we were notified, and I have to speak to the coach. He was asked if the captains and the coach could be available at noon for a photo, and he wanted the entire team and all of the cheerleading squad. And so applause for the coach, and in addition, the coach and the football team for their third win, their third win over Walpole. And I've been told that fathers are calling their sons, who are graduates of Milton High, asking if they remember when Milton beat Walpole. No one can remember.
In anything?
That's right. So there's a lot of enthusiasm. So huge round of applause.
That's great.
For Coach Dombrowski. Today, through a Milton Public School parent, we have, for the past decades, been hosting children from a school in Japan. And so today and Friday, if you were at Milton High School, or you have a Milton High School student chaired by a Milton High School teacher, the students, I should ask Ms. Varela to do this spot, volunteer to be host or hostess. They bring in gifts, and I, Mr. Zulus is going to try to join us Friday morning to see the 250-
I'm gonna, and I'll be there as well.
Excellent. Japanese students get off the buses to meet the host or hostess student, to exchange gifts, to see them go in the auditorium for the entertainment. Last year, Ms. Sheehan lost her voice just watching this, and then seeing them in the halls for the day, and they spend the day in an American high school. And so, as I said to Ms. Varela, it is an experience our high school students benefit from. These students then go on to Washington and New York. Now, on behalf of the high school principal, another 250 students are coming Friday, and so lots of excitement at Milton High today. But for you, the school committee, to know, I will tell you, nobody skips a beat. Every Milton High School teacher incorporates those students into their classroom. They make it meaningful learning all day, and I believe it's an exchange program that benefits all, 1,000 Milton High School students and all of the students from Japan. So that's today, and again, Friday. Any school community member who's free Friday morning, you're welcome, or any time during the day you might want to walk through and see the exchange. On behalf of the community, celebrate Milton. October 4th, this Sunday, at 12:00, lots of discussions about the storm and whether it will be inside or outside, but there is, we have made arrangements for, if it's rained out, it will be inside the PS Middle School on Sunday. So rain or shine, celebrate Milton. You have followed the press, and you have followed the school committee and my email blast, that regularly, school districts hire consultants to come in and evaluate their special ed programs. And so this school committee did a tremendous amount of work led by the school committee and our then pupil personnel director, Karen Klasby, and now Tracy Grandow and Glenn Pavlicek. And we went out to bid, evaluated those bids, and we now have PCG Incorporated, and they will be in the Milton Public Schools doing focus groups of parents, students, teachers, school committee members next week, and they will be observing in classes across the district. The school committee attended the initiating session where they laid out their timeline, they're going over our student data. They'll be doing preliminary reports that they give to the school committee, and their timeline is December, with the final report out in January. So I'm pleased to tell you that our CPAC has a time to have a one-on-one session with PCG. I put out my email blast, and all the parents who volunteered are able to serve, and we think we have an excellent, diverse cross-section of our parents representing all schools and all programs. You weren't, Glenn, is that right?
Yeah.
Mr. Zulus, or I might leave this for Ms. Varela to speak to by to-school day. I'll skip over that one, and you can pick it up later.
Yeah, I'll cover transportation.
Circle on your calendars, if you would, October 18th. Milton parent Timothy Steele has initiated, over the last few years, having concerts in everything from folk singers to operatic, and the benefits have gone, the proceeds have gone, there's no cost, it's all donations, to the food pantry, to different causes in the town. So I'm proud to tell you that Mr. Steele is a Milton Public School parent, and on October 18th at 4:00 at the First Parish Church, Pauline Wells, the wife of our police chief, who sings across this country, and Milton High School graduate Brandon Grimes will be performing, and all of the proceeds go to the Milton Public School Music Program, K through 12. So we want to thank Mr. Steele, Pauline Wells, Brandon Grimes, and all those who attend that concert. Circle also on your calendar, October 20th, Milton High School Boosters Swing for Sports, golf all day, tennis all day, and I'll make sure the school committee knows, between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock through the evening, I want to recognize the Wallston Golf Club and Curry College, who are huge donors to this event that raises funds to really enable us to run the athletic program at Milton High School that we do. This is a huge event for the Milton Public Schools. Mr. Zulus could probably cover this event. The Milton Library, circle your calendar, October 22nd, will be having their fundraiser. And what the Milton Library is doing, the Milton Library Foundation that we both serve on, in partnership with the Milton Public Schools, Alice Hoffman, who is the guest speaker, is coming in to Milton High School in the afternoon, and we're encouraging, she's going to speak to all PS and Milton High School students after school, extra credit, no homework. And so our teachers are being very creative, that this author is extending herself in the afternoon to speak to PS and Milton High School students here in the Charles Winchester Auditorium. There'll be more on that. Sunday, October 25th, circle your calendar for the Monster Dash, and very, very nice story. Graduating reunion classes from Milton High School often call, and we, James Jett and I have developed a tradition that if you have a reunion, we will lead a tour on Saturday from Milton High School. And so Mr. Jett is to be recognized. He gave up his Saturday, and Paula Rizzi is part of the class of 1965. So 50 graduates from across the United States arrived in a bus Saturday, and Mr. Jett gave them a tour of Milton High School. And usually, the tours will cover the entire high school. He said by the time he got a floor and a half, they said, "We've had enough, we're exhausted." They wanted to stop in the cafeteria, and they, and I have to tell you the most poignant lines, when they were in school, they went to the gym, but now you go to the field house, but I guaranteed them it's still phys ed. And you went out for physical education, now you go to the artificial turf. But they have unbelievable memories of their high school days, and they don't even really, they acknowledge that they're not at the same physical location, but it's still their high school that they graduated from. And the class of 1964, I want to encourage all of you, gave a gift after the tour, and they funded the magnificent trophy case for art and music that is in the lobby as you move up to this library. And the Suzy Foundation has funded both of the trophy cases in the athletic field. So kudos to Mr. Jett, and a little secret, he said to me over the years, "Could you tell me what you know so," he said, "Something, I might not be here." He said he wants to know all about the school building project and all of the stories, so he is well-equipped on his own now to lead the tours. And lastly, a very, very poignant story, Milton High School student Michael Sullivan initiated email to me, and he is not an Eagle Scout, but alone, he spoke to the administrative team, it was very powerful, and we're sending out this flyer. He is putting containers in every one of our schools for citizens to retire the American flag. Between October 19th and November 9th, there will be containers in each school, and he will be collecting those flags, and he will, on Veterans Day, present them to, I don't remember where he's going to go, to a ceremony, and usually, people don't know how to dispose of their tattered or torn American flags. So I asked if he was an Eagle Scout, and he saw a ceremony, and he decided to do this. So we'll be putting this out in there, containers in every school, but any citizen, once October 19th comes, you can stop by the lobby of any school, and if you want to retire your American flag, those will be there for you. So that concludes my happenings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving next to item six on the agenda, the chair's report. Before we proceed with the next two items, I have a personal disclosure to make. After discussions that we had in August regarding full-day kindergarten, and with the advent of the new school year, it occurred to me that next year, my family will have a child, may have a child, in full-day kindergarten. We have a child who will be of that age, and so there is a possibility, even a probability, that she will be attending full-day kindergarten next year. If, as a result of what this committee does, and what the community does, results in tuition-free full-day kindergarten, then my family will have a financial benefit. And as we know, all of us are precluded by statute from taking an action and participating in a decision or determination in which we may have a financial interest. Now, there is an exception to that by statute for general policy matters that would, quote, that would, quote, "be shared by a substantial segment of the community." Now, I was, it seemed clear to me that this was, full-day kindergarten, a general policy matter. However, it was unclear to me what is meant by the statute, in the statute, by substantial segment of the community. So I consulted with the Ethics Commission in terms of their definition of a substantial segment of the community. And this past Friday, the Ethics Commission informed me that their interpretation of a substantial segment of the community is based on a 1992 Ethics Advisory Opinion, which defines it as 10% of the population of the community. So if there are fewer than 2,700 families affected by full-day kindergarten next year, which I think is, clearly would be the case, then my participating in this would not fit within that exception to the financial interest. So based on that, I think it's appropriate for me to recuse myself from the determinations made by this body with respect to full-day kindergarten. It struck me that there was both a statutory and a political side to this. The political side would have been dealt with easily if we just, if my family committed to donating $3,700 next year, if there was no tuition requirement. But that's not an exception under the statute. So based on that, I'm going to recuse myself from determinations with respect to tuition at full-day kindergarten next year. And the next two agenda items do have full-day kindergarten as part of that determination. So I will recuse myself, and the best practice in terms of recusal is for the member to actually step outside the room. So I will leave the gavel in the capable hands of Ms. Padera, and I will absent myself from the room and amuse myself in the hall, hope that you will, hope that you will call me back when we hit item 6C on the agenda. Okay. So Becky, it's yours.
6C?
6C, yeah, you've got 6A and 6B.
I'll try to do my best. Do you want me to wait till you're all the way out?
It's near the screen.
Okay. So, Mr. Pavlicek, this is both slides? You both slept it?
I have both slides. This is the first one.
All right. So, onto the chair's report. The school community goal, which we discussed at length the last time, there were some members that gave some input, which is, I think, what we were looking to do, and we could fully write them up. And so they came out to two different possibilities for the goal that we discussed first, which is the tuition-free full-day kindergarten goal. The first option, or rewrite, was develop a plan by January 2016 for the introduction of tuition-full day, free full-day kindergarten, which will include an assessment of cost and program implications, should the plan be implemented. The second would be, by January 2016, explore the feasibility of introducing tuition-free full-day kindergarten. So I don't know if anybody wanted to discuss? Yep.
I like this one. Thank you. It's clear, the other one's fine too, but it just says again, "for the introduction," and then it goes on to say, "we'll include an assessment, should the plan be implemented." And again, the parent comes in and looks at this and says, "But you're saying you're going to do this." I just would like to be as clear as possible that we're only looking at the feasibility of introducing a tuition-free daycare, kindergarten.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Bagley-Jones, did you have a motion?
Oh, I move that we accept this. By January 2016, explore the feasibility of introducing a tuition-free full-day kindergarten as one of our school committee goals.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bagley-Jones, second by Mr. Walker. Discussion? Yes?
So I, I think it's important, and Ms. Bagley-Jones alluded to this, that we not send any message to the general public in general, and parents specifically, that we've made a decision that we haven't. So of these two, since I didn't submit anything, I think I'm bound to support one or the other. So of these two, I think this does a better job of that, and lays out exactly what, as we discussed last time, I think a number of us were saying, this is really a discussion about the money, and I think this captured that challenge, that really what we're looking at is feasibility.
I would, I don't think I could support this one, because I think the efforts of the administration and some of the school community members to not just explore the feasibility, but find out a way to fund tuition-free full-day kindergarten, not necessarily is taking it out of our budget, but seeking out the Chapter 70 funds, seeking out other avenues to do that, is what we've been doing, and I think this kind of changes that. And when I put other words instead of tuition-free, like, if you put in there, "Explore the feasibility of closing the achievement gaps," it's not satisfactory to me. You know, we need to do that, and we need to find other avenues, and money's not going to fall in our laps, and we can't take it out of the budget, everybody agrees with that. We need to find other ways to do that, and I think that this, the first one, does a little bit more in describing that we want to proactively seek a way to fund tuition-free full-day kindergarten, because it's school, basically. We think every student should have it, and we need to do that, either by maybe this year or possibly next year, but we need, the administration's already done a great job of going out and seeking those avenues, and school community members have done the same and support that. So I don't know why we go this week on this, so, not that, I'd be clear if this, you know, passes, that's fine, but I can't, I just think it's too weak for me to support, but that's my opinion. I don't know if anybody else has anything.
Yeah. So, so Becky, when you, you know, I understand your reasoning's there, that it's, that it is extremely vague, but when you say develop a plan by January 2016, this is my question.
Yeah.
So is that plan include other options than an override to cover the full-day K? So basically, how I look at it is that the way, the way we work the budget, you know, you have contingent, non-contingent. So, you know, the way we would look at it, if it was feasible to, to get the money that we need through a portion of the override, but if we, if that doesn't pass, you know, we're, and we're saying to the community, like Mr. Walker said, that we're going to develop a plan, so the plan is going, going to the state and saying, "Well, can we work something else out? Where else can we get the money?" I mean, what's, I want to know, because for me, like, again, like, which I said, we already have full-day kindergarten, it's not, I mean, you're always going to fine-tune programs, but it's not like we don't have it, we have it, it's just that it's a fee base. So my question is, how do we, the plan is, where do we get the money for, the plan is, where's the money coming from? So I guess my question is, if we committed to develop a plan by January 2016, there'd have to be a couple of different options in that plan of where the money's coming from. Like you just mentioned, you know, I mean, chapter, my concern is, yeah, I'd love to see, like, where can Chapter 70 come, or if we go to the State House and there's different advocates, but it's, it's not a guarantee. I mean, we could, we can go after it, and we can advocate for it, but I just, I'm somewhere in between where I will, I don't mind expressing to the community that we are going to develop and try, but we can't, based on the current economic circumstances, guarantee it until, I mean, I know it's like, oh, why are we fighting over wording, but I just want to make sure that they know that we want, we would advocate for it and we want it, but I don't want anyone to say, "You said we were going to have full-day K by fall of 2016," because you never know how the ball bounces, right? So that's my only concern.
Yeah, and I think that, I'm not necessarily married to that date, I think it's develop a plan, but, and as I said before, it might be this year or next year. I don't see, I definitely don't, the override is going to have to, because it's a, it's a continuous amount that we're going to need every year, a much smaller amount that's going, that we're going to need every year out of the operating budget, but the big amount that we need that first year has to come from somewhere else, because we can't ask people to put that in our operating budget, because it's only a one-time fund thing.
Right.
But I think we're, we're leaving money on the table every year and charging people for tuition, and I think we're not the And, and I think we're not the only ones looking at this, but we have kind of led the charge and this is important. And it seems that we have a lot of support from people looking at the same thing because I think the, the goal is really not only to make it tuition-based, tuition-free, but to make everybody offer full-day kindergarten in, in Massachusetts. I think that's the eventual goal. And like I said, you know, I still remember sitting in that chair and seven years ago, when we started full-day kindergarten and the promise was that it would be eventually tuition-free, it's seven years later. So, I think there's a timeliness, there's just a little bit more urgency to me than develop, explore the feasibility. So, if we decide January 16th is not feasible, we just let it go and not do anything with anymore? It's just too, that's too weak of a goal to me. I don't think it's necessarily a goal. It's, it's like an exercise and exploration. Instead of a goal, what's our goal? Just to explore it? We've been exploring it, I think, for a little bit already. So, it's kind of, to me, a little bit weak. But like I said, you know, that's, that's where I stand. So, I don't see the value in, in supporting that.
So, if I may, it's a very, it's a simple yet complex topic that we've sort of entered into. There's been a lot of discussion about full-day K. And we've sort of haltingly come to the conclusion that it is one of our financial priorities. And I like this proposal because, because of the degree of ambiguity. And I, I acknowledge that that degree of ambiguity, in some ways, does a lot of disservice to the people who have done a lot of hard work trying to figure out a way to fund full-day K. And without getting into sort of a broader discussion of the economics behind it, the short version is, there are substantial initial costs to starting the program. And then there is a recurring cost to, to having that program. And the intermediate-term effect of those recurring costs may be a net positive for the town. So, it's, it's a topic worth exploring. But I don't think that we have quite worked out the, amongst ourselves, where this falls in our list of financial priorities. And we don't necessarily want to communicate to, to the broader public. We have committed to doing, reaching this goal at the expense of, of other ones because we haven't had that, that discussion yet. So, to that, in that sense, the, the ambiguity of this, I think, works in our favor and it, we, we do not run the risk of miscommunicating or have it be misperceived that we, we are instituting full-day K. That said, I, I like, to some extent, I, I like the, I like the specificity of the other language a little bit more. But I, I think our conversation, our extended conversation around this topic should have, hopefully, informed the public of our position as a body. So, I'm, I'm really, at this point, I, I could, I could take either one. I feel like we have, we have done our best to communicate to others that, that we have not committed to full-day K, but we are, we are actively trying to seek a way to, to make sure that it happens. But we have not yet assessed the, the financial implications of, of that on the rest of, on the rest of the district. Does that make any sense? Does that add any clarity or does it just make it muddier?
Um, sorry. Varela and then, then.
All right. Go ahead. Go ahead. All right. Um, for protocol, could I recommend one change and see if we could all get on the same page for it? I don't know if this is correct, but what if we say, "Develop a plan by January, January 2016 for the feasibility of tuition, tuition-free full-day kindergarten," and then it all, and then continue, which would include the assessment, cost, and program implications? So, if we, if we strike introduction and place feasibility, it would still be more detailed. But I think from the community viewing of it, we are being very upfront that we're going to work hard to find the funds, but we have to assess the feasibility to see where it goes.
So, are you making a friendly amendment?
Yes, a friendly amendment.
So, there's a motion on the floor. So, she could make a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor.
That's what I'm saying.
Which is the other language.
Yeah, right.
Or she could ask Ms. Bagley-Jones to withdraw her motion if she supports Ms. Varela's motion.
Either way. So, would you like to make?
So, thank you. So, I'd like to ask Ms. Bagley-Jones to withdraw your, your motion and consider my friendly amendment.
Actually stole the words off of my paper. Friendly down there. So, I think it can be a friendly amendment because that's exactly what I had written.
Okay. So, can you re, can you re-say?
Withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw mine.
Right.
Okay. Now, make your motion, Ms. Varela.
Okay. So, my motion is, my motion is to change.
There's the wording.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm excited.
By January, to add a friendly amendment to say, "By January 2016, explore the feasibility."
Wait, so you're taking out, "Develop a plan."
I'm sorry. No, we can do, develop, develop a plan.
Yes.
By January 2016.
Yep.
No.
To expl.
Let, let her finish, Kristen, then.
Develop a plan by January 2016.
No.
To explore the feasibility of tuition-free full-day kindergarten. And then the contin, the rest of the language would remain the same.
All right. So, can I read it back?
Yep.
Now, the, that's the reason I said that, Kristen, so I could get it all and then you can make your comments. So, "Develop a plan by January 2016 to explore the feasibility of tuition-free full-day kindergarten, which will include an assessment of cost and program implications should the plan be implemented."
Second.
Third.
Any discussion?
I had two things. One, the reason I was interrupting you was because you were reading it a different way than what I had read. So, that's why I was confused. But also, I have to say, I am really confused as to why this one of all the things facing us is part of our school committee goals. I know it is, but I still don't get it. When I look at all the other issues we have fiscally in the schools, I don't get why this one alone is one of our school committee goals. So, I just have to say that and go on reckoning. I'm confused by it. I know it's there and it's been there, but, I mean, I'd like to say, let's make sure our language classes or physics classes are under 20. I mean, why is this one being picked out of all the others? I don't know. That's a rhetorical question.
Mr. Walker?
I understand your point. I might even agree with it. But I think, as this is written, particularly with "Explore the feasibility," I think it's fine.
Oh, yes. I, I agree. I just wanted to put it out there as to, I'm still confused by it. I'm just making it as a comment, a rhetorical comment. I don't get it. I'm happy with the language that, even if she stole it off my sheet and just read it. But no, I'm happy with that. I just wanted to make my point clear in the minutes of what my concerns were.
Any further discussion? Yeah.
I would, I would just add that your rhetorical point is well-taken.
Thank you.
Okay. Without, so, you have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Look at that.
It's unanimous. Unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
Okay. So, moving ahead to the next agenda item, which is the preliminary FY '17 budget estimates. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Walker. Can I say a few things?
So, approximately six weeks ago, through our chair, the selectmen asked us to develop two budget figures for their accelerated budget planning. And they asked us to give us estimated figures for a level service budget, which would include mandated costs, contractual obligations, and the like, and what we might be looking at in the event of the approval of an override, and what, what additional budget funds we might be seeking. So, in a process where normally we wouldn't have reached conclusions about either of those things, particularly the, the additional funding, until early to mid-December, we have, in fact, been able to be responsive to the selectmen's request. I'd like to commend the administration and particularly Dr. Pavelcik for the work he did on that. And also, the school committees to be commended because what we drew on was the five-year planning model that we developed last year, or earlier this year, actually, that allowed us to use those assumptions to arrive at the, the level service figure. So, you see the, the memo from Dr. Pavelcik before us. I'm going to move that we provide two budget figures to the selectmen. The first for the level service figure would be $42,548,079 for the level service fiscal '17 budget, and $44,100,000 for the needs and priorities beyond level service. And we did develop a preliminary list of the things that we think might be positively impacted by an override. And this is approximately 15, 1.5 million over the other figure. Those things might be the restoration of some of the prior cuts that we've had to do, not only in this fiscal year, but in previous fiscal years. Some general education and special education, inclusion support, tuition-free full-day kindergarten is a possibility, proficiency improvement for students at all levels of achievement, and expanding athletic and club offerings and participation. So, those are the headlines. Obviously, the school committee will have the opportunity to hear more about the possibilities in those areas. And since it's probably not likely that we'll get 1.5 million out of the override, we might have to make some decisions about further priorities and prioritization. But I would move that the school committee approve those two budget figures and that the Chair submit those to the selectmen as requested.
A second. Dr. V. Any discussion? Your job's easy. All in favor? Unanimous.
Get mine.
Thanks. Chair back here. Oh, it's a favor. Sam. I'm ready on crew. You're right. I was ready on crew. Do it at the end. I met with Terry this morning.
Oh, did it go good?
Okay. So, we, we're good.
No? All right. That was very pleasant. I think I'm going to recuse myself. I have a few minutes. So, the next item on the agenda is item, item 6C, and that's the topic that's labeled "School Committee Procedures." We've been meeting for just about five months since we started. And I thought it was a good time just to remind ourselves of some of the things that we can do to make our meetings efficient and productive. I think we've been, we've been reasonably successful at having productive and efficient meetings, but I think it's always good to remind ourselves of some of the things that we can do to make sure that continues.
In that spirit, I'd point out, you've only given yourself three minutes on that.
I appreciate that. So, I'll move it along. I'll move it along. The, the first thing that I would, that I would point out, there has been, there have been occasions where I think we have rehashed some of the discussions from one meeting to the next. And I know it's difficult sometimes to remember what we've said in one meeting and what we've, and to carry that on to the next meeting. And so, I would just urge everyone, including myself, to do our best to remember and pay attention as what was discussed at prior meetings so we can carry it on and maybe not rehash it at the next meeting. And to that end, we're going to do our level best to get draft minutes to you prior to the next meeting so we'll have a sense about at least what was recorded for the prior meeting. Second, I've been, I've intended to be very liberal in encouraging rather than trying to choke off discussion and debate. I intend to continue that. And I know that we've discussed this before, and I'm just going to ask everyone, including myself, to be mindful that once a point has been made, it need not be repeated either by the same person who made it or by another member. And I think, I think we've been reasonably successful at it, but I think we can always remember to, to do that as best we can. Third, there are occasions when it's important to maybe have a small, quick sidebar discussion at the table while there's another presentation going on. But I would urge all the members to try to keep that to an absolute minimum because to the extent that there are sidebars or caucuses, it does distract from the presentation. And finally, it is our policy to try to get out all the materials for a meeting three days before. And so, to that end, we send out packets of materials on Friday so that the members have the opportunity to deliberate and consider those materials before they would be asked to discuss them and vote on them. And so, I would, I would ask all of us, including the administration, I know there are times when things come up at the last minute and it can't be helped that there are additional materials, as is the case tonight. But I would ask us all to do our very best to try to get any materials that we intend to use at, at a meeting to, to the Chair by Friday morning so we can include it in the packet for Friday afternoon. And so, those are just a, a couple of things that, that I just thought we could remind ourselves of as we proceed onto our sixth month as a body. With that, I will turn it over to the, to the former interim Chair and now, again, Vice Chair, Ms. Padera.
Yes, another MPEG update. I know you're all excited, but the new room is completely ready except for some lighting issues, but it's, it's ready to go. So, I would like to, I know Mr. Walker said he's out of town next week, but we would like to, if you wanted to come see the room before our next meeting, which is October 7th, correct? Just let me know. I think the easiest to do it right before the meeting. And then, maybe the following meeting, we can schedule our next meeting there. October 7th, we'll still be in the library. But next, before the meeting, if anybody would like to come see the room around, I don't know, six, after 6:00, 6:15, 6:30, come on by and we can give you a little tour and you can see the, the possibilities that we're looking at down there. I think I heard something about there being like 14 microphones or something like that. Really good audio. All right? And then, if anyone can't make it, we can schedule another tour at another time, even before the, the first meeting down there. So, if anybody has any questions?
I, I do. Where exactly is it? Is it next to the band room? Where is it?
Yeah, it is. It is. Although it's, you know, there's sound protection there and, you know, the band will not be playing hopefully during most of our meetings.
The marching band will not be rehearsing during our meeting.
Yeah. It's really amazing. All the, by the way, all the computers are in there. I mean, it's looking fantastic in terms of a classroom space as well for the, for the classroom, the classrooms that would go down there. But it's really kind of incredibly big space once they got everything out of there. It's really, it's kind of a cool thing, so.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Finance Subcommittee Report. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. First on our agenda is the Five-Year Capital Plan. And I would direct your attention to three sheets entitled Schedule H. There's a Schedule H Capital Request for School Facilities and two versions of the Capital Request for School Technology. These are rolling five-year plans, but I'm going to spend most of the time just giving you a brief explanation of year one since that's the year that we would be asking town meeting to approve. Under the facilities, the major items are Brooksfield track repairs. We're at a point where that needs to be done. We did make some improvements previously to the field, and now it's time to actually upgrade and improve the track. Milton High School We did make some improvements previously to the field, and now it's time to actually upgrade and improve the track. Milton High School's security camera upgrades, and there are some blind spots in the high school, this would address that, and Pierce control upgrades on the HVAC, which is self-explanatory, and then security cameras at Glover, Tucker, Collicott, and Cunningham, which are the majority of this request. We are asking for your approval on those items. With regard to the security cameras, some of those are exterior cameras, some of those are interior cameras, so I think we would defer, Mr. Chair, the discussion about interior cameras in the elementary school for a policy discussion by the school committee at some later date. So I want to be clear, we're not asking you to approve that, we're simply asking you to approve the request for the money, but we recognize there's a policy decision there that needs to be addressed. On the technology side, virtualized servers, a large item regarding updating the wireless infrastructure, and there as well, I want to be clear that we spent a considerable amount of money, thanks to the generosity of MFE and the town in the capital plan, to create a wireless infrastructure that has served us well. This particular request is to upgrade and increase the number of access points, so as the number of devices increases in each of the schools, there's a need to do that. We're trying to keep pace with the annual replacement of about twenty percent of our PCs, as you see in the memo, and ultimately, this memo will include detail on both facilities and capital technology. But the desktop computers continue to be, for our teachers, the hub of the network in their particular classrooms. And then some smaller items regarding replacement of obsolete smart boards and backups in the wiring closets. Then finally, you have two versions of the request on the phone system. The first is for two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ten dollars. If it's done in year one, we also have a phased request which splits that amount between two years. So I would move that you approve all three of these schedules, approving both technology schedules to give us the flexibility. We'll submit the one with the higher figure in year one, but if there's a need to spread that request, we have the flexibility to do it. So I would ask for your, I would move your approval and ask for your approval on both of these schedules.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. I have a spreadsheet from Dr. Pavlicek which constitutes the end-of-year report, budget report, that we have to send to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is for information. I believe, Mr. Chair, you'll vote it at the October 7th meeting. Is that correct?
I, this is the end-of-year report.
Yes. That has to be submitted to DSC.
Right. And my understanding is that this needs to be submitted prior to that. Is that right, Mr. Pavlicek?
Technically due tomorrow.
It's due tomorrow.
And I move that we approve it tonight.
Okay. What we can do, if the members, and Leroy, maybe, if the members want to have some more time to look through it, we can always amend it. So I second your motion.
Okay.
And recognize that if any of the members have any additional questions as they review the spreadsheet, we can always amend it, but for the purposes of filing with the state, then I would be authorized to, I believe, I believe I'm in a position to have to sign that, so.
And apparently, I'm working from the wrong document because I don't have the right document, but.
The end-of-year report was emailed. It's about eighty pages long. I emailed you this afternoon. I do have a copy, if you'd like some light reading this evening. I have some copies, one for each of you, if you'd like one, double-sided.
So I would move approval of the document we were sent this afternoon.
Right. It was just finished this morning. But yes, the document gets submitted electronically, but a certification has to be sent in that's signed by the superintendent, the chair of the school committee, and the town accountant.
So I would move we approve the document and authorize the chair to affix his signature, provided he determines that the document is in order.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Third is the MPEG lease renewal. We have, as evidenced by comments and time that Ms. Padera puts in, an excellent relationship with MPEG. We have before us a lease that, a one-dollar lease, that would allow them to continue doing the outstanding work that they're doing. So on this one, this is going to be a recurring theme. I would move that we approve the proposed lease and authorize the chair to sign said lease, provided he determines that it is in order. I did have a brief conversation with the chair beforehand. There are a number of items that legally might need a little attention, and since he's able to do that, so I think the motion that allows him to make the modifications that are necessary and sign the document would be sufficient. So I move approval.
Second.
And just to elaborate, I do have a few suggestions on just cleaning up some of the language, but it's nothing substantive. It's just some cleanup and clarification. Well, it actually is substantive. It is.
It should not be a showstopper.
Right. Yeah, that's exactly right. You're right, Leroy. It is substantive. I think it wasn't intended to be written that way. I think it's cleanup in the respect that it would clarify what the party's intended as opposed to what is actually written on the page, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
The next document you have is fiscal sixteen line items. The school committee did approve a bottom-line budget of forty million, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, but we did not approve the specific line item figures, and that's because we needed to give Dr. Pavlicek time to assure himself that all the dollars were in the right places. So now that we have been assured that that is the case, I would move approval of the document entitled Fiscal Sixteen Line Items for Adoption by the School Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
And last is approval of vendor warrants. You want to give me the amount, date?
From vendor warrant number eleven was from September 10th. That was, we signed at the last meeting, but we deferred voting on it. So it was vendor warrant number eleven from September 10th in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents.
And that voluminous document you have before you?
That's the second one.
What is that one?
That is vendor warrant number fourteen, dated September 30th.
How do we go from eleven to fourteen?
It goes by the week. It's week eleven and week fourteen of the year.
Doesn't make any sense, but okay. Dated what?
Dated September 30th.
In the amount of?
In the amount of one million and twenty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay. Move approval of vendor warrant number eleven dated September 10th in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Five zero one, Mr. Walker abstaining.
Move approval of vendor warrant number fourteen dated September 30th in the amount of one million, twenty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I will say that I haven't had the opportunity to look through this one yet, so as with the last one, or as with taking up the September 10th one on the prior meeting, so I'm going to abstain on this one, and if there's enough votes to pass it, that's fine, but I'm going to abstain on this one just because I haven't had a chance to take a look at it, and I don't know that it's been signed by four members as yet, so.
Not as yet.
Two, okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? I mean.
Oh, I'm abstaining. Sorry.
Okay. Let's do it again. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. Four zero two with Walker and Zulus abstaining.
Just one more comment. I'm not sure if it was vendor warrant number eleven or the one before that, but in reading that carefully, and I would encourage members to read these carefully, I noticed that there was an executed legal agreement that was included in the warrant, and I would suggest that any settlement agreement that is either to avoid litigation or settle litigation is something that should be brought before the school committee prior to execution. In the unlikely instance that that's not possible, at a minimum, there should be a discussion with the chair, but someone on the school committee needs to be informed about the execution of legal agreements before they happen. Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
We're still on the warrants?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not related to signing them or not signing where it is. It might be helpful at some point to get some Finance 101 from Glenn in terms of, as we approach an override season, as to how we make our, and I don't mean a big fancy show, I just mean really going through the basics for the community, but then I also think, I'm always puzzled at, some of us either always sign them, some of us never sign them, and some of us sometimes sign them, and it would be helpful to have some kind of understanding of why that is, what we should be doing, what isn't happening, that there are folks that feel like they can't sign them, and I don't want to have a discussion about it now, I'm just putting it out there that it's something that I really don't understand why there is such a difference, and has been since I've been on the committee, about who signs them, when they're signed, and it might be a good discussion to have at some point.
Sure. And just to elaborate, the requirement is that four members sign the warrant. Sometimes it's a question of logistics, sometimes it's a question of review, but it's a good point, and maybe it makes sense to have that discussion at some point. Dr. Pavlicek.
Just on a completely side note, people will remember from last spring that part of the capital proposal from the town that was funded was for new town software, for financial software. The first phase of the introduction of the new software is happening actually overnight tonight. We are starting to move the accounting and finance software over to the new system. We'll be running in parallel for a while with a full turnover by November 1st on our accounting side. So we've been, we have a seven-hour training tomorrow on some of the new aspects of it, and so we are, this process is underway with the, the warrants will soon be generated out of the new software and new system. We will be moving to electronic purchase orders instead of five-part carbon paper purchase orders, and the town, in fact, will be moving in some cases to purchase orders for the first time. So I mean, there's a lot of improvements coming on with this. We're also looking at, as we've mentioned, moving the payroll over around the first of the calendar year. So there's a lot going on with the software right now. It's been a lot of work for people in the town side and a lot of work for people in the business office to get up on it, but it is underway, and I just want to give that brief progress report that it is, things are actually happening with the expenditure that the town meeting voted last spring.
Thank you, Glenn. And I just want to, just to hearken back to what Mr. Walker mentioned before, I just want to make clear that this chair signs no agreement unless authorized by the school, has signed, I have not signed any agreement nor will I sign any agreement unless authorized by the school committee. So just want to make that clear going forward. So anything further on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, the Policy Subcommittee Report. Dr. Donahue.
All right. Well, this evening, we have second readings of five policies that we discussed at our last meeting, and they were treated to their first reading. There have been no interval revisions or comments that have been brought to my attention or have been made. So what you see in front of you are clean copies of the new respective policies, and I'm happy to go through them individually, to give everybody a chance to refresh the memory on the specific policies. So the first one was Student Discipline, Policy JK, and I would move that we accept this as our, as written before you, our second reading of this policy. There were some specific edits made by our legal counsel with regards to some definitions and to clean up the language, but overall, it is very similar to the prior policy we had in place. Second. Any further? Well, I don't want to.
Is that, I'm sorry, did I hear a second?
It's a second. You heard a second.
Okay. So actually, this is a motion for adoption, actual adoption of the policy. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
All right. Second on the docket is the Second Reading for Policy JKF, which is Discipline for Students with Special Needs. This one received a little bit more detailed attention on behalf of legal counsel to incorporate some new language that the state has promulgated, and I'm going to move that we adopt this as our new policy, JKF, disciplining students with special needs.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Third, Evaluation of the Superintendent, Policy CBI. There were some changes made to the language here to incorporate the new evaluation forms, methods for the superintendent. At the last reading, there have been no interval changes. I would move adoption of Policy CBI as written before you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
All right. Number four, Hazing Policy, Policy JICFA-R. This policy, again, receives some editing on behalf of legal counsel with reference to its references to the relevant state law and state regulations. I would move adoption as written before you, as our newly revised hazing policy, JICFA-R.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
All right. Number four, Hazing Policy, Policy JICFA-R. This policy, again, receives some editing on behalf of legal counsel with reference to its references to the relevant state law and state regulations. I would move adoption as written before you, as our newly revised hazing policy, JICFA-R.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
And then the final policy is our sexual harassment policy, Policy ACAA, which is also cross-listed as Policy GBB. This receives some moderate revision, as Members Zulus pointed out last time, specifically cleaning up language with regards to individuals' rights and who was able to bring complaints of sexual harassment. I think overall for the better. I would, there have been no interval changes, and I would move adoption of our sexual harassment policy, ACAA, also cross-listed as GBB.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Donahue, and thank you to the Policy Subcommittee for their continuing good work, Dr. Donahue, Ms. Varela, and Ms. Bagley-Jones. Item ten on the agenda, Transportation and Traffic Subcommittee. Ms. Varela.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. So to update you about the Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee, just first of all, I want to say that we had a meeting last week, and thus far, we had a very good start to the school year with the buses. The changes that were made by Jake Smith and the administration on the middle school bus, which actually goes down my street, Lyman Road, has made a big difference for time and doing well, so, and hasn't been really any complaints from the community at large, so, that, and then the extra bus that they have put into the East Milton Square community, received very good feedback at our last transportation meeting from the East Milton reps, so that was a positive thing. Secondly, I wanted to talk about Walk to School Day, so National Walk to School Day is next, is a week from today, October 7th, and our elementary schools have been working to put walking school buses in place for October 7th. Many of them are going to have prizes for their walkers/bikers at all four schools, and Yana Linhardt, who is our representative from the DOT, Department of Transportation, has put together, I think we've mentioned this before, over the summer, and Jake Smith is going to assist in cascading those, has assisted in cascading those out to the elementary schools, the best and most effective walking routes that they can take and use for the walking school buses, so that's been a positive thing. Secondly, for the fall, Ms. Linhardt is going to come to the elementary schools to give safety sessions on pedestrian walking, mostly to the early grades, maybe grades two and three, and again, is going to work with Jake Smith to reach out to the principals, to schedule those times to do that. And then, at the middle school, Sharon and her staff are going to come and give bike safety sessions, especially trying to reinforce how imperative it is to wear a bike helmet, because it seems that at that middle school level, a lot of kids who have been biking to Pierce, you know, it's not cool to wear that anymore, and that kind of thing, so that's a big concern that even Dr. Fitzgerald has been seeing and kind of called up to Central about, so we're hoping to get all of those in at the four schools and at the Pierce before the Thanksgiving break. So, right now, those are the, those are some of the things that we have on the agenda for the fall. We've discussed some other things, but haven't been ironed out yet, but we are chugging along.
Great, great, sounds great. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Bagley-Jones.
You might not know this, but I'm just curious, has there been any interaction with the folks that are working on the East Milton deck, in terms of what their plan is? You know, how they're looking at the crosswalks and all of that, because that's such a big issue.
Yeah, no, you know, that's an excellent point, maybe we should, I don't know, who would we reach out to? Would we reach out to Mark Alba, or the selectmen, if to have someone come and speak to, Glenn? Could you, who would we?
It could be Bill Clark.
Yeah, we can reach out and have them come and speak to the transportation.
Bill Clark? Probably Bill Clark.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Padere.
I'd just like to say, Ms. Varela, that I also heard a lot of positive feedback about that second bus in East Milton Square. I think it was much needed, I think that the bus that was there last year was pretty crowded, and I think that it just allows a little bit more space, and it's not even, you know, it's not even winter yet, so, you know, as they get their puffy coats on and things like that, it'll be a little bit nicer, so, and it was much appreciated by that, that crew, I think.
Ms. Norman.
Just briefly, for the viewing audience, what we, we have an established number of buses, so what we did in response to this parents in East Milton, in looking at the ridership in late August, we redesigned the routes on one side of town to enable us to use our same fleet of buses to reassign three buses, right, Dr. Pavlichek? We had two buses, now a third bus in East Milton. I don't want anyone watching to think we bought another bus. We, again, spent a lot of time with Jake Smith and redesigned the routes, and to Ms. Varela's point, the response has been very positive, from my PTO president, too.
Anything further? Moving on, Old Business Citizen Speak topic response, I don't think we have anything there. Item 12, next meeting, agenda items.
I had asked for the discussion of that, and/or the fiscal, fiscal 101 to be discussed, because it's time to start talking to the public about what our budgetary needs are.
So, the only thing I would say on the financial piece, we're having a meeting next Wednesday night, we do have a presentation, I believe, on MCAS, that may be, that may be extensive, so what we might do on the financial thing is kick that to the next meeting, but we'll, we'll work with that and see what works best in terms of planning.
I like that planning.
Okay. As I mentioned, we're expecting a report on MCAS at the next meeting. Anything further for agenda items? No one here for Citizen Speak? I think we are ready to adjourn. We will be meeting next, again, next week at 7 o'clock for our October 7th meeting of the school committee, we hope to see you all then, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Well. Let me see the next.